I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Saint Helena Planning Commission for August 18th, 2015, and ask Commissioner Cobrastein to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cobrastein? Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Monnet?
Here.
Commissioner Kistner?
Here.
Chair President Parker?
Present. Moving on to public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussions nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Would anyone like to speak at public forum this evening?
Good evening. Mary Stevenson, I live on Chablis Court in Saint Helena, and I'm here representing our town, Saint Helena, which is a local nonprofit housing advocacy group. The plant, the city council saw a hotel plan in conceptual form last Tuesday. I personally think it was a really nice plan. The only problem is that it doesn't have any affordable housing in it at all. There is at least one other plan that's making its way through the offices of the city, and I know several council people who have been approached by that. I hear of at least two more that are in conceptual stages. I think the word has finally gotten out that the Saint Helena is looking for hotels after years of not wanting any hotel rooms. So I see this as a really strategic point for the city government to start looking at what we should be doing to provide housing for the employees that will be coming in to service the hospitality that is coming to our town. Right now, the impact fees do not cover the cost of constructing housing for employees. Even if we had land, they wouldn't cover the cost. We have one, we have two really good examples in the valley of how this has been done well. Solage in Calistoga and Bardessano in Yottville. We have one example of how this has been done very poorly, and that's Grandview in Saint Helena. So I would urge that this group put an agenda item on as soon as possible to start talking about what we should be doing to change our codes and laws, et cetera, so that we are maximizing the leverage we have over people who will come into our town and make a lot of money off of tourists and help us house the people who will be working in the hotels. There's lots of data on how many employees it takes for each hotel room, how many employee it takes for each restaurant seat. This is known information. We could use that information to help get the right amount of money and some cooperative effort among all these various people who are coming into town to build wineries and hotels so that we could actually build some affordable housing instead of just putting a few hundred, tens of thousands dollars into a housing fund, which is not going to be enough. I can't stay tonight, but I know you have an agenda item later to talk about future, future things that you want to talk about. I would suggest that, I would like to ask you to invite our town to come and make a presentation of the state of housing in Saint Helena, which we have, and we've been presenting to the Ventners and other people in town. And then I'd also like to see a discussion item on what we should be doing and what we can do to make sure that the influx of employees that will be coming to our town for hotels have housing in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I'm going to close public forum and move on to scheduled matters, which are none. Moving then on to the consent items, we have one item, it's the approval of the minutes from our meeting on August 4th, 2015. Do we have any additions or a motion?
I move that we approve the consent items.
Second.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobrastein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair President Parker?
Yes. Moving on to our public hearings, we have several. Our first one is a design review, PL 15-032 at 1057 Pratt Avenue. Do we have a staff report? Or may we have a staff report?
We do. Thank you, Chair President Parker. The existing 15,815 square foot flaglot parcel is currently developed with a 1,647 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-story, single-family residence with a 400 square foot detached garage and two carports. The parcel is accessed by a 20-foot wide permanent easement over the parcel adjacent to Pratt Avenue. The applicant is seeking a demolition permit and design review approval to demolish the existing structures in order to construct a new two-story, 3,021 square foot, single-family residence. That will be 2,240 square feet on the first floor, 781 square feet on the second floor, with an 849 square foot detached second unit, 624 square foot detached garage, and 120 square foot shed. The new structures would be finished with primarily whiteboard and battened siding with occasional elements of horizontal lap siding. All roofing would be corrugated metal finished with a vintage galvanized patina. Divided light metal clad wood windows would be used for character and scale, and the height of the proposed two-story home is approximately 25 feet. As far as the floor area ratio is concerned, the project would consist of 3,894 square feet, which is 91 square feet less than the maximum square footage permitted for a floor area ratio of .246. While there is a lot of square footage associated with the project, the massing is broken up between the home, second unit, and garage as they are each separate structures. Additionally, Pratt Avenue is characterized by large somewhat rural estate homes, including many large homes on flaglots. As far as the flaglot is concerned, it is true that the municipal code does not allow for easements across adjoining properties to provide the panhandle portion of the flaglot unless lots were recorded prior to 1956 or created through a subdivision before 1994. Staff is not aware of the circumstances behind why the lot was created the way it is. However, staff obtained a map from the Napa County Assessor's Office late this afternoon that shows the parcel existing in its current configuration on a map created in 1954. Furthermore, the existing home on the parcel was constructed around 1948. The lot is recognized as a parcel by the city and the county. From a staff perspective, there is no undoing what was done in the past and no reason to prevent this application from being approved. A variance would only be required if the applicant was creating a new flaglot with an easement. Staff concludes that the demolition permit and design review findings can be made and recommends that the planning commission approve the project. Note that staff received four letters of support for the project after package distribution, and these letters were placed on the dais before tonight's meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Doesn't anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
I did, I was wondering on the next page, let's see, page two of four, it, under utilities, the second paragraph, it says that the sewer system will be extended down Pratt Avenue in the near future. I was just wondering if you had any idea what that means.
Steve, you want to take this one? I guess, can you clarify the question? It says, the staff report says, will extend it in the near future, like, not with this project?
Yeah, there's a septic tank right now, but that there will be a sewer there. I just want...
So the project is conditioned to connect to the city sewer? And they're going to extend whatever they need to to get to their property? There is no plans for the city to extend sewer along Pratt Avenue?
I see. So then it will be as soon as it's possible for the applicant to do this work? Is that what you mean? It's up to them to decide?
They'll be required to connect to the, so they're going to have to extend it for, to get their occupancy?
Okay, I thought the city had to do something, so...
No, the city's not obligated to do anything by the conditions or by the staff board or the project.
Okay, thanks. I also want to disclose at this time that I did visit the site and spoke with the applicant.
I have a question.
I was going to say thank you, Bobby. Go ahead, Grace.
I have a question, I'm sorry. I'd like to know, this, according to the conditions, is considered a new house? And I guess I'd like a report in the future on the growth management system and where we stand with that this year, please? Other than that, I have no questions.
Noted.
I have a question. I noticed from the site plan, apparently, the front and rear yards on this particular project are perpendicular to Pratt. And I'm wondering if staff could address that? I think initially you make the determination of where the yards are, and then it's up to the commission to decide. But looking generally at, I think, the plot plan that was provided with the other materials, it seems that most of the flags and obviously the houses on Pratt have their front yards parallel to Pratt.
Parallel to Pratt Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
I see one on here that's parallel. I see three that are perpendicular. So I, they oriented the house the way they wanted it, and so that's what we move forward with.
Well, one of the reasons I bring it up is because of the lot that's right next door that's still vacant. And I imagine what we do here might have some bearing on what happens on that lot. And it looks to me that, at least from the plot plan, the home that's east of that, that looks to me like it has a side yard perpendicular to Pratt.
I'm not sure, but I can't, the vacant lot that's next to it, I think having the rear yard oriented the way it is would butt the panhandle in what would be the front yard of the vacant lot. So the rear yard setback is larger than the side setback, so I think that could be beneficial.
Yeah, maybe I'm not making myself clear. I'm talking about the other flags further to the east. Most of them appear to have their front yard parallel to Pratt.
Can you give the number?
I'm not seeing that.
Can you go and give us the numbers so that we...
There's a, there's a neighborhood plot plan. It's A 0.00.
That's right.
Okay.
In the petitioner's materials. And just looking, if you start up around 9:15, 9:25 Pratt and 9:45 behind it, it just appears to me on visual inspection and looking just at this plot plan, that the front yard of 9:45 is parallel to Pratt.
Yeah, staff didn't do any analysis on how the other flaglots were configured and where their front yards were.
It does look like there's a mix, though.
There's a mix, for sure.
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a question? Are you concerned that it's going to limit the use of that vacant lot? The person that's behind them that has the vacant lot also owns a lot in front of, that's really two properties, but they're connected, but it's the same owner, is my understanding? So is your question, their orientation limits his use or puts him into a negative position down the road for the value of that lot? Or I'm just helping to understand, because both in looking at the plot plan as well as the plot plan diagram, as well as the plot plan that's more of a photograph where we can see tree line and lawns and that sort of thing, it is definitely a mix. So it would help us know what the question is. It might help staff too to understand what the issue is.
It just seemed to me that the orientation of the house is flipped 90 degrees from most of the rest of the flags that are developed there. I do recognize that this is sort of at the end of the line, and it has, it has a lot of rear yards surrounding it, it appears. I don't know that it would make a significant difference in their site plan, but I'm just curious.
I guess my understanding is that they kept the configuration of the original house, which is that the front yard faces west, so to speak, and that the backyard faces the eastern mountains.
And it's not visible at all from the...
No, it's not. Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, I'd love to hear from the applicant.
Donna Hines, and my husband, Ryski, right here. Can you hear me? Okay. I just want to thank you all for the work it takes to analyze one of these projects, and thank you to those of you who were able to take the time to visit. I think it was helpful because it is a very unique property. And I think I would just like to start by addressing Mary's question a little bit further because, let me get to that part of the slideshow, jumping a little ahead. Oh, that didn't come out the way I expected. Hold on. Yeah, it got a little distorted, but, so the lot that we're talking about, the pointers, oh, it doesn't work, does it? It doesn't work on the screen? Okay, okay, so it doesn't work. Well, the lot, the one that's currently vacant, I called that owner, and he does own both. He owns the one that right fronts on Pratt and the one behind it. And he did say he does plan to propose. And when I told him that I was planning a proposal and said, would you like to see the project, you know, would you like to get together, his comment to me was, I believe every owner should be able to do whatever they want on their property, and I don't want to see your project, I don't care what you do. But so for that reason, I didn't get a consent letter from him. I really just got consent letters from the people that had asked to see the plans. And my thought, I mean, in retrospect, I guess I should have asked him, well, you know, just give me a consent letter, but I do believe he consents to the project. And also, the point was already raised, but we did stay with the current configuration of the existing house. And additionally, this site plan enables a little bit more privacy by having the building serve as buffers for the surrounding neighbors. So I will just go ahead and go back to, the style of the house is a classic farmhouse style. Erin did a great job of kind of going over, you know, it's white, battened board, galvanized roof. It's very consistent with the current houses on the street, both in size and style, and it's also consistent with the vineyard style of, you know, further down the street where there are farmhouses and vineyards. And then from Pratt Avenue, and actually, I don't even think you would see this much, but this is kind of the view you would see if you were standing probably halfway down the easement or further. And then this is really just to show how it looks like topographically with the site plan superimposed over the topog, the topographic map. So you can see all of the houses in the area are large and, you know, it's, again, characteristic with the existing neighborhood. Here's the site plan, and I think the thing I wanted to show here, it's a very basic site plan. I wanted to take some of the busyness out of it that's in your set and to show really the large spaces that are around the buildings. And the setbacks on the main house, the required setbacks are 10 feet, and we have 28/4 on one side, and on the other side, it's 24/6, I believe. So there is, we've really pulled it in, and if you look at the original house that's there, there's large structures all in the top right-hand corner that are practically, you know, in the face of the neighbor behind, who I do have a support letter from. And this is actually, in some ways, this new site plan is beneficial to some of the And then, again, this is a little distorted, but this is just to show the consistency of the proposed project with the other ones on the street. There are 10 houses, they're highlighted in orange on mine, I was going to point them out, but since you can't see it. All 10 of these have FARs that exceed our proposed FAR. And then I think the majority of the houses on Pratt and the flaglots are two-story houses. The element of two-story on this project is actually fairly small. It's the one little rectangular area to the left of where it says main house. That's the only part of this project that is a two-story element. So the current house that is on the property is in poor condition, and the proposed project, I believe, will be an improvement and an asset to the neighborhood and to the city of Saint Helena. The current house is being offered to the city of Saint Helena Fire Department for fire drill practice prior to the demolition. One of the neighbors, Jose Martin, who I do have a support letter from, he is the fire captain of the city of Saint Helena, and he supports the project both individually as a neighbor and as captain of the fire department, and he's very happy to be able to use the existing house for their drills. They won't be able to burn it, but he said there are quite a few drills that they are able to do, and there is a letter, I don't know if you mentioned that, but there is a letter from the fire department. The house, as I showed, is consistent with the other houses in the neighborhood. It's similar both in style and in size and in the fact that it does have a two-story element. The house was designed to have minimum impact on the neighbors. The outdoor living areas will be in the middle, surrounded by structures that will act as a privacy buffer. The neighbors support this project. Every surrounding neighbor was contacted and early in the design phase, and I personally met with anyone who wanted to meet with me and see the plans, and there was no opposition from anyone. And in fact, we do have the three support letters. The project meets all FAR and all other zoning specifications set forth by the city of Saint Helena, and the allowed FAR is 25.2, and our proposed project four is 24.6. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. First of all, I want to compliment you on your submission. I'm new here, but I found the plot plan with all of the square footages and FAR ratios for the surrounding lots to be extremely helpful. I appreciate it. My question is about your easement. I'm wondering if you have the right, under the terms of the easement, to landscape it and possibly improve appearance?
You know, I, we actually, the easement that was in place when we put the contract on the house was a permanent easement, but we did decide that we wanted to do the sewer project, which I meant to address, we are going to pay for that 100%, which might also benefit future neighbors. But, gone now, kind of went off track, but, where was I going?
The easement landscaping.
Landscape, landscape. So as part of this, putting in the...
Sewer?
The sewer, we negotiated a new easement, a new permanent easement with Jose Martin, who is the captain of the fire department. And honestly, I can't remember now if that easement provides for landscaping. I think Jose seems very, very happy to work with me. I think he would allow the landscaping, so. But we did, we do have a new permanent easement in effect that allows for the utilities.
Okay. Well, I was really happy to hear that the fire department is not going to burn the house, because I had some questions about that. So, that sounds great.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant? I have one, and it's also, it's for you and I guess also staff, given the article in the paper today about our watering usage and water for pools. I see that there's a pool proposed here. Will that, is there going to be a condition for the water to not come from Saint Helena stock in this, or is that applicable to this?
Yes, the project is conditioned to truck water in.
Okay.
They will not use potable water.
Perfect, thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Jaime, oh, put up here. My name is Jaime Ponse, and I live in 1840 Granila Drive. It's right there behind the property when I tried to do the two-story house. And talking to my Pratt, this thing is, it's in Pratt, it's in the middle of Pratt and Granila. And that house be a two-story house right there behind my backyard. And I was against, they said she talked to everybody, she not talked to everybody. I live next door.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll get a chance to, would anyone else like to speak at public comment or public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to invite the applicant back up.
I am so sorry that we weren't able to talk. I believe I left several messages last spring, and I didn't hear back from you.
I need evidence.
Okay, I apologize. I am not sure if, well, first of all, let me just show you where his property is. Is that, well, what's the best, it's the one?
84, 84, what do you get my address?
It's, no, go lower. That one. It's that one right there. So it's kind of backs up to the corner of the property, and I'm not sure that this project will have a big impact on that property.
Just to clarify, that's not where the second story is. That's a single-story building that's going to be on your, against your property line.
The two-story element is actually pretty far away from where your property is. And maybe I had a wrong number, but I did leave several messages, because I tried, I tried calling every single property owner that touched the property.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public comment and invite Commissioner Discussion. Who would like to go first?
I would like to say the same thing, Mary. Did I certainly commend you for the lovely presentation that you gave us. It's really nice to see a package like that. I also like your project very much. The only comment that I have is that I still believe that we need to cut this FAR down. I think we're building too many big houses that will not, at this point, keep me from approving your project. I think it's lovely, I love what you've done with it. I went over there by myself, I did not join you people, but I like it a lot, and I'll be very happy to vote for it.
Thank you, Grace.
And I wanted to compliment the thoroughness, reaching out to the neighbors, which is important. And I also, in this particular project, although I agree it is a large home in total, I think it's been very thoughtfully put together with lots of open space, and by having multiple buildings, I think it's going to give an airiness, and it doesn't have what's been an issue in the past of massing and feeling like a large, overbuilt structure. I think it's been very tastefully and, again, thoughtfully put together, and the composition on the lot, to me, isn't going to feel nearly as big as perhaps the square footage might lead it to think so.
Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, I agree with both Commissioner Kistner and Sweeney. I, yeah, it's a lot of building, but again, your neighbors, you know, the neighbors are in favor, and to me, that's the most important part of it. And, you know, it's your property, and it's a beautiful house, and I, you know, I agree with the other things that were said. I want to thank you for inviting me to see it. That's always helpful to see it, and I wish you well, and I certainly support this project.
I would just add, although it seems like a lot of building, it's also a fairly substantial lot in terms of the size. And if we were at, you know, this, I don't think we could even get to this FAR on a smaller lot, but that in combination with the separation between the buildings and the open space that you have around the main structure, you know, front, side, and rear, I guess, I think it's a nice site plan and suitable for the site and the neighborhood.
And I agree with my fellow commissioners, again, the plot and the renderings is thoughtful, and you take into consideration the space and the massing, as Commissioner Sweeney brought up. It is a substantial lot, as Commissioner Cobrastein brought up, and it is broken up into pieces, so the massing isn't as apparent. I am so happy that you reached out to the neighbors. It's always so nice to hear that there's at least an attempt, and I also am in support of this project. I also just needed to disclose I did visit with the applicant on the site. So if we have a motion?
And I would like to disclose I did meet with the applicant on site, and by myself. I walked back after she left.
Let's see, I move that we determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which exempts demolition of accessory structures, and Section 15303, which exempts the construction or, which exempts the construction or conversion of small structures, including single- single-family residences, garages, pools, et cetera, and that we accept the required findings and approve the demolition permit and design review for the proposed project located at 1057 Pratt Avenue.
Second.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Kistner?
Yes.
Coburnstein?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Thank you so much. Moving on to item number seven, this is a demolition permit, use permit, and design review for 1340 Tainer Street and 1255 Oak Avenue. If we could have staff's report, please.
Thank you, Chair Parker. The item before you tonight is the Parish Life Center proposed by the St. Helena Catholic Church at 1340 Tainer Street and 1255 Oak Avenue. The project applicants are requesting a demolition permit, use permit, and design review to demolish the existing Parish Life Center and second time around thrift store, construct a new 9,300 square foot Parish Life Center in the same location, and relocate the second time around thrift store to an existing single-family structure at 1255 Oak Avenue. This is a summary slide of the renderings proposed. It provides a little bit of context with the existing historic church on the property. Also shows some of the proposed walkway features for a mid-block crossing that I'll address or discuss a little bit later. This is an aerial photograph of the site identifying both the Parish Life Center location as well as the location of the second time around thrift store, the proposed site. This site plan identifies the final design of the proposed Parish Life Center. The site includes five parking spaces, new trash enclosure, extensive plaza areas and landscaping. As I mentioned, there is a mid-block crossing, which you can see just to the lower end of the slide in the middle, and that will be a lighted mid-block crossing to improve visibility. New restrooms are also proposed on site on the right side of the structure up against the northern property line or northern, based on the slide. The site is designated public and quasi-public by both the general plan and the zoning district. It is within the urban service area. Interestingly, the zoning district does not have a FAR or floor area ratio, but the general plan designation provides a floor area ratio of .5. There are several general plan policies listed in the staff report. Just to highlight one, it's the permit the infill development in higher densities within current developed areas wherever possible to minimize and postpone the need for expansion of the urban service area. The design is consistent with the setbacks, height, et cetera, of the current developments in the surrounding context. And it's interesting, and this, the public, quasi-public zoning district essentially defers most development criteria to be set by the use permit. There's not a lot of specific setbacks or height limits identified in the zoning code, so that defers to the planning commission to set those. As I mentioned, the site provides new trash enclosure, screen storage for the donations at the proposed second time around thrift store, which is required by the zoning district. Interestingly, the zoning code does require parking requirements based on the zoning code section 17124 and landscaping, which is 17112. Getting into some of the SEQA issues with the project, this proposed structure was constructed in the 1800s and a historic resource report was required by staff. That was included in your packet. The architectural historian identified that although the structure is constructed in the 1800s, it's been significantly modified and lost its integrity under SEQA. And so, based on that analysis and the rest of staff analysis, it was determined to qualify for a Class 32 infill exemption. Water demand analysis, including your staff report, identifies that the project is consistent with the neutrality requirement and it's primarily through fixture and irrigation upgrades. So, all the fixtures will be water efficient and the landscaping irrigation will be as well. The design review and use permit findings and design criteria listed in the staff report are listed in the staff report and staff finds the project consistent with these requirements. A number of letters in support and some in opposition or voicing concerns over the proposed parking were received, both prior to the packet being created and several were received after, which those were forwarded on an email or provided at the dais. So, with that, the issues with the proposed parking essentially revolve around parking with the proposed project. The zoning code, section of the public quasi-public district identifies that the planning commission shall determine the appropriate number of parking spaces for use types not listed in the code section through the use permit process. Retail land uses require one space per 300 square feet. The section also identifies that churches are assembly uses and require one space per 50 square feet of assembly area. The proposed Parish Life Center is essentially an extension of the church. It's intended to provide meeting rooms, childcare, youth services, and senior programs. Other areas of the building include a commercial kitchen, storage, and office uses. So, it's kind of a mix, some assembly uses, some that are not. The applicant has provided a parking analysis of the proposed use of the site. And those parking areas are spread throughout the property and on other areas in the surrounding context identified here in blue. In addition to identifying these parking areas, there are also walking trails identified in yellow that would allow access to the new Parish Life Center from the parking that's available at the school, as well as to the proposed thrift store location from the parking available behind the school. However, a number of these parking spaces, 25 of them, are included in the parking lot across Oak Street, which is private property. There is a parking agreement that was provided by the owner of that parking lot, which identifies that the church has allowed access to that parking on an average of once per month, weekends and evenings, but not continual or constant access to that parking. The analysis identified that the required parking for the site is 123 spaces based on identifying all areas of the Parish Life Center as assembly, other than areas not counted like the commercial kitchen and the storage. And the applicant provides 119 stalls, including the 25 spaces across Oak Street. The owner of that property provided some additional comments indicating that they believe that the availability or the limited availability of that parking should prohibit the church from being able to count it towards their required parking counts, although the church does have access to it on a limited basis. So, based on that, staff is recommending that the planning commission hold the public hearing to allow members of the public in attendance to provide their input, but continue the public hearing to allow the applicant to revise their project and for the agenda to be correctly noticed. The applicant did come in today and provide or file a variance application in response to these kind of late-breaking comments as a means to address that issue. However, staff has not included any analysis of that in the staff report and that was not noticed that way based on the agenda. So, that concludes staff's presentation. I am available for questions.
Does anyone have any questions with staff at this time?
Just for clarity, can you repeat the total number of required spaces based on the plan as submitted? I know that then we need to remove the 25.
Based on the plan as submitted, it's 122 parking spaces required. If those are all seen as assembly uses, the parking requirements, the parking section gives some deference to the planning commission. So, if we wanted to drill down into it, there could be some flexibility in that number. But based on the analysis provided by the applicant and reviewed by staff, 122 required, 119 provided, including the 25 spaces that are being contested.
And is staff comfortable with the square footage in the plan that the square footage that is assembly in use is consistent with what the applicant? So, we're on the same page with what the total assembly use square footage is? Everyone's?
That's correct. It's a conservative analysis of the assembly use. That's correct.
It's conservative, but it's supported?
Yeah, it's supported. It's not trying to drill down too much or discount too much areas. That's correct.
Does anyone else have any questions with staff?
I have a question about the parking. I thought if you had an arrangement for off-site parking, it had to be in a recorded document?
Typically, it would be in a recorded document. A lot of the parking agreements in town, I'm finding, are not always done that way. So, staff did not require, staff has provided a copy of the agreement by the property owner and staff did not require that that be recorded as a formal parking and access easement as a part of this review.
They've been recorded recently.
I have a question. On page three of eight, it says, "The proposed setbacks are substantially consistent with the setback of the existing PLC structure and other structures." What does that mean, substantially consistent?
Well, the existing Parish Life Center appears to be on the property line. However, there are some school structures that are actually attached to the back of the Parish Life Center. So, this project will actually provide a larger rear yard setback than the current Parish Life Center.
Okay, that's what you meant. Okay, and then, actually, let's see. On page four, maybe you address this. I didn't quite understand it. On page four of eight, it says that while clearly in assembly occupancy, the strict application of the code requirements specific to the church may not be appropriate, given the very nature of the proposed buildings. Well, if those applications of code are not being used, what standards are we to look at?
Those applications of the code are being used. However, the commission may find that it's more appropriate to be more flexible, given that it's often going to be the case that the Parish Life Center is not at full occupancy, because some of the rooms may just be used on an as-needed basis. Essentially, staff sees that the Parish Life Center is not going to be fully occupied.
100% of the time.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And the code gives the commission flexibility.
Okay, those were my questions. Thank you.
And are we given flexibility on the retail parking as it relates to the retail use?
The retail is prescriptive at one per 300 square feet and the project does provide that.
If my arithmetic is right, we have, I think... There are 96 parking places currently. Without the 25, there's something like 94 parking places currently available for 121 required.
So, we need to find 28 spots.
Some are being eliminated.
If there needs to be 122 and we have 94, then we need 28.
Some are being eliminated, though.
No, that's taking into account the eliminated spots.
89 is what we have.
So, 119 currently provided minus 25.
Is 94.
94 spaces are in full control of the church and proposed by the applicant to be used for the site.
The eliminated spaces, the 119 in the application is net.
Is net.
Is net, yeah.
That's right. And again, the applicant has filed a variance application as of today to address the parking situation. Staff has not done any analysis on that. However, there are constraints on the site, some of which are the fully-developed nature of it and the church, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. So, in review of this, during the public hearing, it may be beneficial for the applicant to hear some direction from the commission regarding parking needs or maybe some flexibility that the commission may or may not be interested in providing, given the nature of the use.
And are we at liberty to discuss that under the Brown Act for this meeting?
Not the variance itself, but the parking completely.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I assume we do that later.
For...
The applicant has a presentation.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if we gather a little bit more information, more knowledge, better. Okay, perfect. So, let's open up the public hearing and ask the applicant to give their presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Lane Borges with Borges Architectural Group, 1478 Stone Point Drive in Roseville. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and present this project to you. Since one of the items that we are requesting is a design review permit, I would like to spend a little bit of time talking about the facility design so that we can have a chance to respond to that. I do know that parking is an issue and a concern. I would like to speak to that also in a moment. And then with me is Father Gordon Khalil, and I'd like him to also speak tonight about the reason for the project, who will be using it, how it will be used, the functions that it will serve, and hopefully clarify a little bit maybe the density of parking need that there will be based upon how the facility is actually intended to be used. See if I can get that image up there, full screen. Thank you. This first slide is basically a site plan, just a colored version of what Noah had provided earlier to show both properties, both the site where the church is currently located, as well as the site where the existing private school is, that parking lot, and the proposed location for the thrift store, as well as the location of additional parking that the church controls on Kearney and Spring Streets. Unless there's any questions, I won't go through a lot of detail. Noah did point out the circulation that's being proposed, both from the existing school lot over to the new church Parish Hall, as well as the existing sanctuary, and then the connection from the Spring and Kearney lot to the thrift store. These images on this page show the design of the proposed Parish Center in context with the existing church. So, you'll see that the Parish Center itself is kind of tucked back into the site. That's a good image in the top left-hand corner of what the exterior would look like if you were standing kind of on the backside of the existing sanctuary and looking at it. We have incorporated stone materials into the design, pitched roofs, in order to try to emulate the original design and intent without trying to duplicate what the original church design is. You'll see there's some images from inside the facility as well that show the character of the, what we call the gallery space on the second floor overlooking the main meeting And then, these are the plans which depict the first and second floor. The first floor is on the bottom. So, as Noah discussed, of the 9,000 and some square feet that the Parish Hall is, a significant portion of that is what we'd call support spaces, meaning storage spaces for chairs and tables, serving kitchens, a plating area, restrooms, lobbies, the altar society kind of storage facility. And so, downstairs, we have our main assembly area is approximately 2,800 square feet. And then we have four individual meeting rooms on the second floor, with two of them being divisible into smaller spaces. And of the second-floor square footage, probably about 40% of that is also circulation space, restroom, stairways, elevators, and those kinds of things. Go back to that plan. I'd like to just talk for a second regarding the parking and the application. And one, offer an apology to staff and to the Schertz family if there was anything that appears to be misconstrued. It was not intentional, but looking through the project description, I see at least one error in that it states that there were 25 spaces available. And if you look at the original agreement, which dates back 26 years, I believe, to 1989, the agreement only identifies 21 parking spaces. I wish I could answer how it got from 21 to 25, but the original intent was 21. The other thing that our project description and the staff report probably doesn't accurately reflect is it was never our intention to assume that those 21 spaces were available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our assumption was those space availability would be based on the agreement that we believed was in effect, which was for approximately one time per month and not during any business hours. I think Noah spoke a little bit about, or answered a question about, you know, occupancy of this facility. And Father can probably address that in a little more detail, but we don't anticipate that 100% of this facility would ever be occupied at one specific time. The functions that this facility will house are functions that are currently either handled onsite or across the street at the school in facilities that are quite old and quite antiquated. And one of the primary purposes of this project was to consolidate them in one location, not for the purpose of trying to put 500 people into one building, but putting a variety of different room sizes into one building that was technologically up to today's standards that would allow the church and the various groups that are served by the church to have a place to meet and to gather. served by the church to have a place to meet and to gather. As with the, I think, the spirit of the original intent of the original agreement, which I think indicates, you know, gatherings of 200 people, is kind of what we expect as a maximum, and again, on a basis consistent with what the original agreement set out for. I'll let Father talk in a little more detail, and maybe you'll have some specific questions about the groups that meet there, how many people are in attendance, how often these groups meet, but this is not intended to be a public conference or convention center in any way, shape, or form. Father, would you like to take a moment maybe and tell us a little, tell the commission a little more and the community a little more about the facility and the users?
Good evening, thank you, Lain, for presenting, but I also want to thank our wonderful city for listening to all of this. We've come to a crucial crossroads as a parish, we're celebrating our 150th anniversary, which is monumental in the city of St. Helena, and our tradition of being a part of this city, both culturally, as well as spiritually, as well as our outreach and support in the community. And as Lain says, we have no space to meet, our only space is across the street at the school, and it's a gym, and then we have a modified meeting room next to the thrift store, we have outdoor bathrooms, two of which I'm sure nobody likes using. It's really, it's just not an appropriate place for us to grow as a faith-filled community, to serve the needs of the parish. We have a blessing of many, many young families that are here, some of whom for generations with young children, we have a number of elderly, as you know, in our population, as we do, and a part of the goal of this was to meet the needs, not only of our parish, but certainly that of the community, and it is open to the community. In fact, Rianda House, I've already spoken with a couple of people there, we'd like to be a satellite for daytime activities with our seniors, we're told that they've kind of, they're burgeoning with need for space, and it'd be a beautiful part. We understand, of course, that the teen center is being closed next year, and a lot of our youth from our parish have been a part of that, and so on the second floor, you'll see at the, which is really at the west end there in the corner, is a large room for youth, and it will be dedicated for youth and youth use. Say that ten times. The gift of all of this, however, is a part of recognizing not only our heritage of being an important integral part of the community for our 150 years, but also who we are today and continuing to support the community. The meeting rooms will be there for our St. Vincent de Paul organization, which has a very active place in the community, and by the way, I want to express, none of these services that I'm talking about are based upon a particular religion or faith. For example, St. Vincent de Paul serves the entire community. When we serve Rianda House, we hope, again, open our teen area, the same. So for me, and I think to let you know, the heritage of the parish has always been a linchpin in the community, to serve the greater community, not uniquely those who are Catholic. And we extend that tradition by having the space and by having the opportunity to meet our needs, both as a parish as well as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father. I just want, as I was, as Father was talking, I was looking through my notes about the parking situation, and I did want to make just one other point of clarification. Based upon the current plan that's proposed, I think somebody else pointed out that there are a few spaces that are being eliminated in the construction of the new fellowship hall, is that there would be eighty-nine parking spaces remaining without use of the parking spaces owned by the Schertz family across the street. And it is our belief, again, based upon the way the facility that will be used, that although a pure calculation would determine that 122 spaces would be necessary, that would be as if every meeting space in the facility was used at a hundred percent capacity. Since we don't believe that to be the case, except on rare occasions, that would then be accommodated by the additional spaces under the agreement with the Schertz family, we believe that the eighty-nine spaces that are currently available would in fact be sufficient for every other use of the proposed facility.
Perfect, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I'm wondering, when you come back, if you could be a little more specific about the use, I'm not familiar with what you're doing in the gymnasium now. I don't know if this facility would be used for wedding receptions, post-funeral get-togethers, you know, it has a kitchen facility. It would be helpful to me to have a better understanding of who would be there and whether anybody from the outside would be permitted to rent the facility or use it, that would be helpful.
Okay, Father may be able to answer that now.
Hi, I'm Anna Canales, I don't know, do we have to say that, 1219 Stockton Street? Someone who's worked with the youth in St. Helena and taught confirmation for the last 12 years and done a lot of things, that space in the gym is used by kids. It's not a great space, we're hauling a lot of stuff in and out to prepare it so that we can use it with the kids at night, and then it has to be ready for the elementary school kids during the day. So I think some of those meeting rooms would be used by teenagers with adults, and the kitchen facility is certainly an integral part of that, as far as the kids are concerned, because the way you get kids involved is to feed them, as we all know. And then Father will answer the rest.
Thank you.
As far as being open to the public for renting, the answer, the short answer is no, because we have so many weddings as it is, this past year, we had almost forty weddings. As you all know, this is a destination location, but those weddings are Catholic, they're in our church, and a number of those weddings, we're hoping will also stay on the campus, because our weddings are on Saturday, and then, and the addition of the reception area would be connected to the wedding. As far as funerals, absolutely. It's not only what Anna was saying about the condition of the gym, it just isn't appropriate in a sense of respect, it's a cavernous, well, you know what gyms look like. And so to provide something that is in keeping of the respect and the beauty of our church is certainly a goal that we have. Does that, was there anything else you wanted on use?
I would like to know, what is your policy about serving alcohol on the premises?
It's the same as what we've always had.
Which is what?
We do serve alcohol at receptions with permits and with the standards of the county with those who are trained to serve.
Okay, thanks. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
I have a totally different question. This relates to the thrift store. How does the drop-off work? Does a employee accept the donation? And the reason for my question is, I'm wondering specifically about the location of drop-off.
There is a, we haven't moved there yet, but there is in our plan for the move to, between the school, the end of the school building and the house itself, there is a driveway, and that would be the drive-in and drop-off, which Noah pointed out will be fenced off, so that there's no access, we will have security cameras that will be posted, and if necessary, we will enforce what we find. That's a part of one of our goals, to also have that store location, because tucked away, the mission of the store, and again, it's greater than our parish, has a twofold mission. One is to serve those who are less fortunate with affordable clothing and other houseware items, as well as to fund tuition assistance, and again, with families who can't afford our school, and that twofold purpose has been a part of one of our founders, Diane Nunez, who's just moved to Alaska, but her daughter, I just saw you here, Toni, is continuing that 34-year tradition, out of a dedication to both missions. The other factor in that service to the greater community, you may recall the earthquake, we opened up and I worked with the Community Foundation of Napa, and we got so many families that came in and they received free supplies, free needs, when there were fires in Angwin, what is it, a year and a half ago, the same thing, so it's, again, it's a community service, it isn't uniquely just for the parish or the school.
I'm wondering, I have another parking question. All the scenarios mentioned in this, in the materials that we received, there is no scenario around the drop-off center for this, for the second, for the used store, used clothing store. What is the parking situation, what do you anticipate, did you anticipate at all for the need for parking, like, I suppose, during the hours of operation?
Be to run and drop things off, or...
And during the hours of operation, like, sometimes there may be several cars there, I'm not sure if, how you accounted for that, or how you worked that into your analysis, or if you're planning to do that.
Sure, and I...
Yeah, the total parking number includes the parking required for the thrift store, they're proposing it at the satellite parking lot on the corner of Spring and Kearney, Kearney, and there's the pathway that was highlighted on the site plan in my presentation that shows a connectivity between that parking lot and the second time around store, they're including ADA improvements and some additional security improvements to make that accessible.
And what are the hours of operation of that store?
We haven't worked on that.
They are...
Well, it's in, it's in the applicant letter.
They're conditioned to be, I believe, nine to six, they propose less than that, but I, there is a condition that they're specifically limited in hours of operation, and it's also conditioned that all the drop-offs and donations must be completely screened and contained behind a secondary fence at the end of the driveway, which is identified on the site plan.
Now, may I ask a question on the public parking lot that's across the street, on how that can be utilized with the situation?
So typically, when you're looking at commercial development, you do not count street parking as a component of the commercial development, so I did not look at that parking lot at all, and was not factored into the analysis of this at all. It is an interesting fact that that parking lot primarily serves uses that are eight to five, and would, there would most likely be some public spaces available for spillover from this use, however, it cannot be counted in any type of commercial activity, and while the church isn't quite commercial, it's not residential, so we do not count the street parking or that public parking.
It's still something for us to consider in the back of our minds when discussing the variance, yes.
And I had a question as well, in some of the kind of satellite uses or partnerships, for example, with Rianda House, is there a way to look at utilizing, tying some of that parking that's available to these other entities? I don't know, but from a creative standpoint, are there partnerships that can be made and used?
So, part of...
That available to the applicant?
Part of the analysis or the direction providing, or identifying the flexibility to the planning commission is getting to the fact that some of the users of the assembly space will be youth, will probably not be driving, maybe walking over from Boys and Girls Club or other schools in the area, some of the folks at Rianda House may be walking over because of the close proximity, but it's, that's speculation at this point.
My question was more specific, could agreements, is it within the realm of possibilities that agreements can be made with some of the other entities in town that you'll be doing partnership programs with? Could that parking be fed in, or is that not allowable?
There are specific provisions with regards to the distance for accessory parking, and I believe Rianda House is having parking challenges themselves.
All right. Does anyone else have any other questions of the applicant? All right, perfect, would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item?
Good evening, I'm Rafael Rios, attorney here in town at 1360 Railroad Avenue, and I represent the Schertz, and given what was disclosed earlier that there's been a variance application filed, some of my points might sound moot, but however, I think it's important for us to make sure that you're made aware of the concerns we had about the parking, specifically with the project. I want to make clear that nobody is against the church or the project itself, the project looks like it will be a wonderful asset to the community, and there's no issue with the project, however, the issue that we have is that the parking, as originally proposed, would put a greater burden on my client's property, and so that's what I want to speak to and make sure that you're aware of the reasons behind that. So, as proposed, the project did not provide the required minimum parking spaces, which, as you heard, were 122 spaces. There were 119 that was recommended for approval by the staff in the staff report. The problem with that is that there really weren't 119 spaces available to the applicant. Part of the reduction to the 119 in the staff report is based on this claimed authority of the commission to reduce the parking. The commission doesn't have authority to reduce the parking in this situation. That section that is cited there from the zoning code, which is 17.124.030H, gives the commission that power only when the use is not listed in that section. This use is listed, it specifically says that assembly uses, churches, have to meet the requirements set there, you have no authority to change that. If churches were not listed, then yes, you would have that authority, but not in this case. So, of the stalls that were, would be required, the applicant is relying on off-site, off-site locations to meet that. Only five stalls, as was mentioned, were onsite, and the code does allow for the off-site parking to be used to meet the requirement, however, there are some conditions to that. The, there were the multiple sites that were being proposed to be used to meet that, those additional spaces that were needed. Part of it, the Catholic school parking lot right across the street, which is not an issue, of course, that also is not available during working hours, which everybody that is downtown knows how hard it is to park, and especially for the Schertz's tenants in their parking lot who can't find parking during business hours because so many people park there. But of the other locations, there are two. One is the church's property that is located on Spring, the corner of Spring and Kearney that was mentioned, that would provide some of those additional spaces that are needed. Even that space is questionable. The code actually provides that, to use off-site spaces to meet your parking requirement, those spaces have to be within 300 yards of the use that's being proposed. That lot is further than 300 yards. So that is another 23 spaces that are questionable for the project as proposed. Then, of course, our main concern, the Schertz's lot, which now does have 25 spaces, that as mentioned in the agreement that has been referred to, it had a lesser number of spaces. But the problem here is that this is a private lot, neither the church nor the city has the authority to use that lot. The agreement that's been mentioned does not meet the qualifications that are required under the code to use that lot and count those spaces. That agreement was made way back, I believe it was in the eighties.
1989.
Thank you. Didn't contemplate the increased use at the church or this project, it doesn't meet the requirements that it's got to be recorded, the restrictions and covenants must be recorded to provide those spaces perpetually for the proposed use. So... must be recorded to provide those spaces perpetually for the proposed use. So, with that, those spaces are not available. That agreement with restrictions and covenants that would be required to use the Shirts' lot, it's not an option, given the problems with parking that my clients currently have with the space anyway. So, even with the authority, if the commission had it to reduce the number of spaces, I think there's still a problem because of those other spaces that are also in question. Also a concern is that, you know, using my client's lot would potentially affect future development rights that they might have, and those spaces not being available to them in the future if they decided to do something. It's clear, and it's been discussed, that the staff report and the recommendations rely a lot on the perceived time of use of the project's activities. The problem with that is that they can use it day, night, weekend, or weekday. There's no restriction on the use. Hopefully, it'll be very successful, be great for the community. And you would expect that the use of that space is going to increase at all times of the day. So I think that reliance for the recommendations on the fact that it may not be used fully or every day, I think that's misplaced. So, those are the concerns we want to express, even though we know that now there's been a variance application, and I think that that is a more appropriate place to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Henry Gundling, and I live at 1185 Meadow Creek Circle. And my wife and I are both parishioners at St. Helena Catholic Church. And I wasn't aware that parking was going to be an issue. I just looked at the agenda and it seemed like everything was fine. So I really hadn't prepared any remarks. So what I would like to say is just kind of off the cuff here a little bit. I'm at the church often. I'm the finance committee there. I sing in the choir, so I'm there during the week on a regular basis. I'm there on the weekend. And I've been doing this for a number of years. And I don't ever remember seeing a time when the school parking lot was completely full. And my personal opinion is that we could, the church could probably even just do away with the agreement with Shirts', and we'd still have adequate parking. And the other thing that crossed my mind, which I, I don't know if this is jealousy or what, but I also sing in the choir, the St. Helena Chamber Singers, which operates out of the Episcopal Church. And the Episcopal Church, they have a parish life center that's actually quite similar to what we're proposing. It's on a much, I would say, you know, it's a smaller footprint when you look at the whole campus. And I don't, I'm not, I don't have the facts, I don't know, but I'm just, visually, this is my impression. And I never try to park in their parking lot because they, it seems like they have maybe, I don't know, 15 parking spaces, something like that. So, you know, usually there, I see all the other choir members as well, just parking along the streets there. So I think in terms of the current capacity, even if we didn't use the Shirts' parking area and relied, you know, strictly on the school parking, the public parking lot that's available, also kind of more or less adjacent to the church, at least in my own personal experience, that's always been more than adequate. And so I would really urge you to consider a variance. I think, I'm probably going to run out of time here, but I wanted to just add also very quickly that I think St. Helena, the town of St. Helena and the parish is very blessed to have Father Gordon as the pastor. He's a very able pastor in so many ways, but certainly in terms of helping to raise the resources that's needed to create a project like this. And in a relatively short period of time, the parish has succeeded in getting commitments to raise most of the, not all, but a lot of the funding that we need for a very substantial project. And if any of you have been by there recently, you can tell that the area that we're talking about, and really the campus around the church, is in serious need of an upgrade. And I think this project will do that splendidly. So I would just encourage you to not be too rigid on the parking issue because I don't think it'll do the church much good to leave the buildings where they are. I don't think it'll do a lot of good to have a really fancy parking lot. And I'm hoping that there's some kind of compromise that can be worked out to expedite the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'd like to invite the applicant to come back up if you feel so the need. If not, I will close the public comment.
The only thing I really wanted to respond to, there was a comment made about the distance of the parking lot at Spring and Kearney to the proposed facility. And Noah, you may be able to clarify this. What was mentioned was 300 yards, which is 1,000 feet or close to it. I just did kind of a quick little scale of the plan, and we appear to be well within that from the furthest corner of that lot. Not that that's the only issue to be concerned here, but it would appear that that would meet the definition of off-site parking.
Perfect, thank you.
Are you suggesting that it might have been 300 feet instead of 300 yards, or do you know that it's 300 yards?
I don't know that it's 300 yards. I should, Noah may be able to clarify that.
I was looking through the code quickly. I had not found this section. It will be included in the analysis when I bring it back.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much. Before I close the public comment, does anyone, do you have any questions for anyone, for the applicant? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and invite Commissioner discussion.
First, I'd like to disclose that I'm a member of the parish. I'll also disclose that I spent a great deal of time about two months ago with Father, and he explained the whole plan to me. I do have some, a couple of concerns, and I don't want to discuss the parking until we hear the variance report, but I have a couple of other things that I'd like to bring up. I'm concerned with the drop-off area and the fact that we don't most of the time look at things after they've been approved. And I want to be sure that that drop-off area is not visible from the street. I think that, I think that, because I go to the church, I see the unsightliness of the drop-off area that we have now, and I really would not like to see that happen on Oak Street. I got a couple of other things. I'm concerned that Condition 19 says there are no signs approved as a part of this auction. Separate sign permit approval is required prior to any sign construction in our installation. And I guess I'd like to address this to Father Gordon. I would appreciate it then if we take the signs off of the fences around the parking lot. That's bothered us for a long time, a lot of us. So, and I would, unless you get signed permits, I would prefer that we don't hang things off of fences. I think that's unsightly.
May I ask for clarification? Are you talking about the ones on the school campus?
That's correct. Had another one too, but I can't find it right now. So I will say that I really like the, I like the parish center. I think it's absolutely a wonderful addition. I think it would be a great addition to the town. I think that the architects done a really good job here. I like the, I certainly like the things that they provide us with to look at this. And other than the parking and the couple of things I just mentioned, I would be ready to approve the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Kistner.
I have just a few comments. The first might come as a total shock to Father Gordon, but I too am a parishioner. My children were altar servers, and we spent a lot of time there earlier in our life, but I'm still a proper sure. But the question that I had was really, kind of circling around the idea that we don't see a lot of increased use. And one of the topics of the teens center closing, which my impression was that had been pushed off, and that's actually not, in fact, happening, which is a good thing, certainly in this budget round. But if we do see more activity with Rhonda House, and I'm also a proponent of Rhonda House, so I like all the idea of working with other entities, but I think that also goes to say that there will in fact be increased uses. And so I just want to make sure that that's being factored in, and if we can look for ways to just mitigate more traffic, I think it's all good for our community, but we might have folks who want to have an opportunity to speak to that. Just keeping those thoughts in mind.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney.
Well, I just, I want to compliment the church on, you know, planning to open their activities to people who aren't parishioners. I have to disclose that I'm not a parishioner. And however, and I appreciate that. And I don't think that's happened before, at least not to my knowledge, in town. However, you might have some unexpected success, and also some cumulative effects from the Episcopal Church as well. So my sense is that unless we put some restrictions in the permit, we need to plan for maximum capacity, because I can see that this may be an extremely successful project with lots of people, more people than are coming now, coming in the future. And I would expect that you would welcome that. So if we don't plan for the maximum capacity, then I think we need to put some restrictions to keep the use where it is now or close to where it is now, which apparently is just perfect. It's not causing any problems. So that's one of my, and with some of the restrictions I'm thinking of, and I have no idea, and, you know, I have no idea, this is going to, this permit will last for a long time, so it will probably go beyond the influence of the people who are here now. And I would like to put in the permit because I've seen, sitting up here for a while, that if it's not in the permit, it's not likely to happen. Noise restrictions, no amplified music in case there were, you know, activities going on. No renting to outside entities. And I don't know, I think I would like to think about, you know, no renting for other fundraising. I mean, you can do fundraising. I don't know if that's part of the plan, but, and then you told me about the wine serving, so that's already part of what you do. So that, I have no problem with that. But, and the compromise for the parking would be to limit the size of activities to whatever number people, you guys come up with that is close to what's current and, you know, and effective and compatible with the neighborhood right now. So those are some of my comments. Otherwise, it looks like an ambitious project and, you know, will benefit the whole community.
Thank you, Commissioner Ronette.
I share some of Bobby's concerns about this becoming a very successful facility and maybe starting to stretch the capacity of the parking, whether it's on the site or on the adjacent streets. And I think it's something that we should look at carefully. If it is a situation where there is some agreement with some other group to provide parking, I feel quite strongly that we should follow the ordinance, and that should be a recorded document so that it binds the subsequent owners of the property that is providing the parking, particularly when we're talking about an institution like this that has already been here for 150 years and is going to keep going and parking. And, yeah, I feel, I feel quite strongly about that. I'm not clear, real clear about the lot at Spring and Kearney, but it does seem to me to be so physically separated from everything else. I wish there could be a way found to make it more obviously useful for the parish life center. I don't find it to be a particularly attractive use for the donation center. It's a long walk. I have a hard time envisioning somebody parking there, you know, and walking over to Oak Street. On the other hand, I'm still questioning how the donation works because I would prefer to see the drop-off somewhere other than on Oak Street, even if it's fenced. I think a better use of that space would be for parking onsite for people who come and actually use the facility. So to the extent the donation drop-off can be put in one of the other parking lots or something, I think that would be an improvement. Oak Street, you know, it may be commercial on one side, but the other side is not. You know, there's one parking lot, but otherwise, I would like to do what we could to keep the residential character of that building. And big fences and security and cameras kind of don't fit that bill in my mind, so.
Thank you. I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I think that this has the capacity of being very successful. It's nice when the community is picking up where it's not quite so feasible for the city to provide a center for teens and to have assemblies and gatherings. And I think that that's great. And I agree with Bobby that this, and the other commissioners as well, that this is going to be an increased use. It just seems like with the, I'm sorry, I can't speak, the capacity of success, I think that it's definitely there. I also am concerned about the drop-off, especially because it's on Oak Street, and just it could be unsightly. And I think that we can come up with a nice compromise there when we come back with the variance. Maybe we can, we can meet in between that time and kind of brainstorm together. That would be, that would be nice to possibly meet with some of the commissioners on that applicant, because we do meet with, we do meet with applicants on agenda items, so that wouldn't be out of the norm. And I think that that's really about it. Other than the parking, I'm very concerned about that, but I think that we can also come up with some sort of agreement on that. I would like it to be a recorded document as well. And I also would like to confess that I have been to church once. And it was with Commissioner Kistner, so.
No, I have to.
No, just at, just at St. Helena Catholic Church. I go to St. John's down in Napa. So, if we could have a motion to continue this item to discuss the variance, that would be great.
Before we make the motion, do we need to provide any other direction? Would this be our time if there's anything else to consider?
If you have other analysis you'd like included in the staff report or other direction for staff?
Okay.
Separate from variance specifics.
Because the one question I had would be in terms of receptions and other uses that even if they are for parishioners or weddings, still do bring folks to the facility, could we look at tying your contract that you have with your users to perhaps providing their own parking or shuttles to a FIFA parking down the road? And there are facilities and other businesses within town that do provide parking for public events, and then whoever's having the event provides shuttle service. So maybe there's ways you could creatively look at modifying your existing event contracts.
That is a really great idea. Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm wondering if the commission would support my idea to have a noise restriction in the permit for no amplified music that could be heard outside the premises. And they could have amplified music, but not that could be heard outside the premises, and possibly a prohibition on renting the facilities to outside people. And if those restrictions were not liked at some future date, they could be removed?
I'm still not comfortable with noise in the conditions because we do have a very nicely written noise ordinance, I do believe. And so I think that that kind of, that covers it.
I agree.
And-
Well, okay, but I just let me, just-
If we did a noise ordinance, if we did a noise condition, I would want it to copy the noise ordinance. So it, I don't think it needs to be in there twice.
The noise, the, what I was, it doesn't specifically say in the noise ordinance that amplified music is okay as long as it can't be heard off past the premises. The only reason I'm thinking it's important to have it in the permit is that then it's not totally complaint-driven, and it's not totally up to neighbors to have to, to have the onus of calling, you know, it would be already known.
I would want to ask staff, if time permits, to determine, is that conventional? What do other, for example, the Episcopal Church, what are their constraints? I mean, I wouldn't want to put undue and unique constraints on the Catholic Church that don't exist. I know this discussion came up for the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, that was worked through. So I think it would be only fair and right to see what already exists and not create something new and more restrictive here.
I also would not agree that we should limit them to not having outside people. I think that's one, I think that's one of the, I think that's one of the great big pluses of this, is the fact that he's, that Father's willing to let the community participate in this. And I think that we need more community within this community.
I agree.
I meant out of towners having-
Thank you, but please no applause. Thank you.
I want to clarify. I meant, I was thinking of out-of-towners who wanted to get, you know, who wanted to have a wedding and a reception there from out of town.
Well, that does happen. People can get married there and have, from out of town.
And have a reception there?
Oh, yeah.
They can have a reception there.
That happens today. That happens now. Provide any- Provide any.
Oh, okay. So you did it in the gym, the gymnasium.
Staff will include an analysis of the noise impacts and proposed uses of the site when we bring it back.
Thank you.
Oh, can you also put in your analysis, if you don't already have it, the cumulative effects of these activities? Since there are several other churches on Spring Street, in terms of parking? In terms of these, these issues?
To the best of our ability.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to continue?
I saw move to continue.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. And staff, Noah, Aaron, when do we think that, how much time do you need for this?
It was anticipated that we would continue the item to the September 1st Planning Commission meeting. The application was filed by the applicant. Not a significant amount of analysis needed, and there is still time for the notification.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I'm going to give us a moment for people.
I didn't realize it's out of town.
They've been having. No, it's not just that, no, I'm talking about, some of the community, like the Rhonda House or the Boys and Girls Club or the Teen Center use the facility. Well, okay, then you didn't, then you weren't clear, I think, okay. Well, but, but they have. Well, they have weddings there all the time. No, we don't do wine tasting there. No, no, he doesn't, he doesn't do wine tasting there. But I really think, you know, like the Rhonda House has run out of space and they can't get any more space. Well, the Rhonda House, huh? Well, if I was him, if I was, and I, you know, if I was him, what I would do is I would take this piece right here.
Has everyone left that would like to leave?
On the other side of the gym here and just, and partition this all.
Yes, okay, so.
Bring, bring people in here and you'd have 20 parking places.
Okay, moving on to item number eight. This is a short-term rental permit at 1134 Valley View Street. And Commissioner Sweeney will need to recuse herself due to her having a short-term rental permit. Going to give her a moment. If we could have a staff report.
Thank you, Chairperson Parker. As noted, the applicant is applying for a short-term rental permit. The applicant is first in line on the waiting list for a permit where they have been waiting since December 2013. The applicant has been renting out the home on a short-term basis without a permit since January 2014. Note that there is nothing in the short-term rental ordinance that prevents someone that was previously renting without a permit to apply for a permit when one becomes available. As part of this process, applicant agreed to pay back all TOT form from these rentals, including interest and penalties totaling over $14,600. Staff notes that the applicants have been very forthcoming, cooperative and prompt throughout the process. Staff also had the opportunity to visit the site and notes that the owner applicants have meticulously renovated and upgraded all aspects of the home, including multiple layers of privacy screening in the backyard. The city has an adopted short-term rental ordinance that allows for a maximum 25 short-term rental permits in the city. This applicant would be taking the place of a previous permit holder. Therefore, there is no net increase in short-term rental permits within the city. Furthermore, short-term rentals are a permitted use with a permit within the medium-density residential district. The city would also benefit from transient occupancy tax revenue collected from an active short-term rental permit holder. The Planning Commission should either approve or deny the application after considering, considering the effects the proposed use would have on surrounding uses and the cumulative impacts within the community. Staff received three letters for the project after packet distribution. These letters are placed on the dais before tonight's meeting. Two of the letters express support for the project, noting the Rosdells' restoration of the property and attention to detail. One of the letters expresses concern about short-term rentals in general, citing issues with parking they are experiencing in their own neighborhood. It is important to note that we are considering the application before you tonight and not the overall merits of the short-term rental ordinance. If someone from the public is here to like to speak on the overall merits of the short-term rental ordinance, we are having a special town hall meeting on the short-term rental ordinance in Vintage Hall in this very room on September 23rd from 5:00 to 7:00, where anyone from the public will be able to make their opinions on the overall ordinance now.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff at this time?
I do. As I understand it, we do not have written protests from 30%?
That's correct. We, we didn't at the time of packet distribution. It's possible with the ones we've received after that, that we've gone over it. But staff was in a position where we didn't feel comfortable administratively approving a short-term rental permit under the circumstances. So we decided to bring it to the commission for approval.
Okay, I, I guess that's kind of goes to the heart of my question. I'm not sure we have jurisdiction to decide this. If we don't have an applicant who is a corporation and we don't have written protests by 30% of the adjoining owners, it seems like it's the decision of the planning director to approve or deny. I don't know where there's a discretion coming to send it to us.
The planning director's granted the discretion by the short-term ordinance to elevate applications to the Planning Commission at his discretion, his or her discretion. Given the fact that they were, they've identified that they were operating without a permit previously, staff felt that was the appropriate level of decision-making.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have to say that I wasn't aware that PowerPoint presentations were allowed. So I'll just speak from my notes. Let's see. I've been living at St. Helena on and off since 1980 when I started to work in the wine industry. And in the early 2000s, I moved to Europe and started to work there. My husband and I, who is English, bought the property in September 2013. And we had three or four months of renovation. As people on Valley View probably know, the house was in very much in disrepair. So basically, everything inside and out needed to be replaced. As Aaron noted, we started, we applied for a permit in December 13. And at that time, I believe there was a different planning person there. His name was Greg. And the application process was a lot less, I should say the list, not the application. You just really went and signed a list. There was no formal way to do it. Literally, I put my name on a list. And at the time, I was speaking to Greg. And I said, well, we're declaring that we have intentions to do a short-term rental because we're putting our name on the list. Is there, what's the story about doing this before an ordinance, before a permit is granted? And he said, well, you know, he's the, take a look at the internet. There are literally dozens of people. It's really your decision if you want to go ahead and do it. So after looking at the internet with 90-some-odd properties, we decided that, okay, we'll follow the herd. And we began renting in February of 1914. And we spend about, since we live in Europe, we spend about three and a half months here each, each year. So last year, we were here February through mid-May, the same this year. And when, when we're gone, we have been doing short-term rentals. And also, we do house exchanges and we have family in the Bay Area and people come up and stay. So if you're interested, I can give you the days that were rented in the different years. And we know that we're in violation of the short-term ordinance, but we believe that we would like to be considered for approval for the following reasons. We're really supporting the community through taxes and revenues. And our guests really come to enjoy the Napa Valley and they spend money here. And we enhance the value of our property as well as enhance the neighborhood by all the work we've done on this property. And we feel that that's a positive contribution to Valley View. Furthermore, we believe that we're good neighbors. While doing this, we have a property management team of two people who regularly check in with our neighbors to see if there's any issues that they need to, that we need to be aware of. And from one of our neighbors saying, please cut the bushes down because when I pull out on my driveway, I can't see traffic, to also responding to putting in a new fence on both sides and going beyond splitting the cost of the fence for our neighbors to cover some additional costs. We did that. Also, as noted in the letters, when working to renovate the backyard, which definitely needed work because of the dogs they had in there and torn up and problems with the deck, we worked with a local interior designer to put privacy screens up so that would give us more privacy along with our neighbors. During the application process, besides doing this on a regular basis of working with our neighbors or talking to them through, through our property management team, we felt we did a great job with outreach. When we were doing the application, we sent out a letter of intention to all of our neighbors who were on the short-term application list. There were 22 of them. And we stated our intention. We said, we, we are planning to do this. The city said that according to the rules, you can have up to eight guests. And our house, a three-bedroom, two-bath house, really couldn't accommodate eight, eight guests. So I said in the letter, we would have four, sometimes five. But four has usually been the amount that has come to couples. No children. And our intention was to do it on, on weekends if there was a demand for it. And we invited people to email us as opposed to call us because we have a foreign number and would be hard to reach with the time zone. And would respond to any inquiries that we got. And we did get one that we talked to via phone for about a half hour, talking through concerns that this neighbor had. We also had our property management managers literally go house to house to drop off the letter. So it wouldn't appear to be a junk mail that was popped in their box. So if the neighbor was home, they actually met with them and said, do you have any concerns, what can we do? So we feel that we made the effort, especially since we couldn't be here since we were overseas, to do this. When opposition letters came in, I immediately responded and addressed all the concerns that were raised in these letters. And I'd like to point out too, that when we were notified by the city, I believe one of our neighbors obviously denounced us, we immediately ceased the rental. And also, working with the city, we declared what we had rented. And as soon as we got the financial information on what we owed, penalties and fees and fines, within 24 hours, we had paid those, those TOT taxes and the, the penalties. So that's basically what I have to say. And, and I'm not here really to make anybody wrong in what they feel because everybody is entitled to their opinions, especially since they're neighbors. But I welcome the chance also to state the facts as I see them and also offer my opinion.
Thank you.
Could you state your name?
Paula Rosdell.
And does, and does anyone have any questions of the applicant? I do. Where are the property managers, where do they live?
They live around the corner on Hudson Avenue. In fact, if, do you want them to be identified now?
Actually, that would be great, yes, thank you.
They live actually, because they have children in the area, they're passing our house twice a day. So the one thing I love about having them is just the close proximity. And their name, Donnie Freight and Suzanne Nicholas.
Ah, perfect. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Nicholas. My husband, Donnie Freight. So we live at 1544 Hudson Avenue. And as Paula mentioned, just by default, having children and three schools, we physically go by the property multiple times a day. This property is a bit unique in the sense of although I have been a very part-time property management manager and available to Paula for this property, I actually greet every single guest that shows up. So it's not a lockbox property. I, as a former recruiter, I also get, you know, I spend about a half hour with them, assessing them, talking with them about what's expected, touring the property. But about 30 to 45 minutes of my time is spent with the guests that come in. I also text message them throughout their stay to check in, make sure everything's going as planned. And then as soon as they depart, I review the property. My husband might want to speak about his role. And he, he's actually been much more interactive with the neighbors. Just by default, I oversee just the, the general running and kind of interior of the property, I would say.
Hi, I'm Donnie Freight, 1544 Hudson. I've interacted with the neighbors on either side, actually with one of the neighbors. I'm involved in the community with Boy Scouts and with the nonprofits for the Harvest Festival and things like that. And I've never heard like an out complaint. You know, there was like some dissatisfaction and I, and another neighbor, I basically, I would check in with her and I saw her at the gym where we work out, the same place. And everything was fine until about maybe eight to 10 days ago. And she was very disgruntled with no explanation or anything. So I don't know what happened between whatever happened when they got their fences put up. And it's, everything seemed pretty decent to me. And I'd never heard any complaints. And any of the complaints that were, they were addressed. So. Any questions?
Perfect, does anyone have any questions? No, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And with that, would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Please note that there is a three-minute limit. Jim, if you could take care of that, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tona Kavakovic. I am a full-time resident of St. Helena and I am my own property manager as I live there full-time and have for a number of years. And I would like to thank Aaron for mentioning the town hall meeting on the short-term rentals on September 23rd. I think you'll be surprised to see what the response is. And if you're planning on having the meeting in this room, I think you might want to rethink that. Either that or you're going to have to have a loudspeaker. Anyway, lately, I've been hearing bits and pieces from neighbors and friends sharing concern about our city's government, who's managing what and in part, who's minding the mint. A large part of this community is disheartened with how our city is being run. I'm here this evening to let the Planning Commission know that some of us are St. Helena strong. And we want to help bridge the gap between city government and the residents of St. Helena. On any given day in this country, you may find a small-town newspaper printing an article on short-term rentals, commonly known as STRs. I am here this evening as an LTR, a long-term resident. If all of St. Helena's LTRs will stand up and speak their minds, we will become St. Helena Strong once again. We want our neighborhoods back safe and secure. We want our city back healthy and strong. We want to have faith in our city planners and council members that they can return St. Helena to the city it once was. St. Helena should not be known as the city that rewards bad behavior. As example, 1134 Valley View, after a warning from the city about operating an illegal short-term rental, the owners wrote a check in excess of $14,000 to cover back taxes. And here they are tonight requesting a short-term rental permit. How do you, how do you justify that? If you violate city code but can write a large check, then you're in the clear? Is this the message you want to send to our community and our taxpayers? This simply cannot be the right thing to do. If the city ordinance states that paying back taxes brings an applicant into compliance, then the ordinance needs to be rewritten. Rewritten before any more short-term rental permits are approved. If anyone in the community is interested, we have set up an email account, And please send us your contact information. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I've spoken to you before about short-term rental. As I live next to one.
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Ann Brooks, Main Street, St. Helena. I'm opposing the short-term rental permit for 1134 Valley View. As stated in Planner Aaron Heacock's report, he was brought, it was brought to the city's attention that there was an illegal short-term rental going on in mid-June. A cease and desist letter was sent to the Rosdells to stop all the activities immediately. The Rosdells have been on a waiting list for an STR permit since December 2013. So the Rosdells were fully aware they were running an illegal short-term rental, all the while continuing to operate. The city of St. Helena is currently suing another owner of an illegal STR. What makes the Rosdells any different than the current person being sued? The city of St. Helena ordinance clearly, clearly states under Purpose and Findings, Section 17, Number D, no person shall use any single-family dwelling on any parcel in any zoning district for short-term rental without a short-term rental permit. Under Regulations Number Nine, the permit may be revoked by the planning director at any time if the owner violates any provision of the short-term rental ordinance, conditions or permit approval. The Rosdells have violated the ordinance prior to getting a legal permit. There is also a threat to the public welfare with transient people and cars in and out. daily. As mentioned before, people are walking their kids to school. Valley View is an already very busy street. This should add, this will add additional activity, additional noise, and safety concerns for children walking to the high school and to the St. Helena Primary School. We need to know that our children are safe. This is an issue we have with transient people in and out. When the Rosdahls got caught, they offered up the TOT tax. These are owed regardless. This should not give them a pass for a permit. The question is, are you going to reward their illegal use of an STR issuing them a short-term rental permit? No one should be allowed a short-term rental permit that has been conducting illegal operations. I thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Maxine Angel. I live at 2101 Spring Street. I moved to Valley View subdivision 23 years ago to be in a quiet residential neighborhood. And the subdivision has been there since 1961, also providing families a quiet residential neighborhood. Prior to that, I worked here for 10 years in St. Helena. So over the 33 years, there's been enormous changes that we all know about in St. Helena. There's busier streets, there's a reduction of local serving businesses, there's additional wineries and tourism, and that has impacted the residents in a major way, and we've made those concessions. But why I've chosen to stay here is because our neighborhood was still a neighborhood. And I'm here tonight because I feel like it has the potential to not be a neighborhood. The neighbors in our neighborhood are on a first-name basis. Many of them have lived there for decades. We know each other's names, we have conversations. The integrity of the neighborhood is something that's priceless. That cannot be, you know, we've taken enough of the commercial needs of the town. We have a street now that is the main street that people use because they don't want to deal with the traffic on Main Street. So we constantly have cars coming around, and we've had to deal with all these changes, and we have dealt with these changes. But my home was still a place that was my home with my neighbors. And that is changing. 1134, we don't need to project how that will impact our neighborhood. We can see it already has because it has been used as a rental for some time. We've had more cars, people going in and out, unfamiliar faces changing every few days. It's not just a question of keeping up the yard, putting up privacy fences, or limiting noise. That's not the issue. It's really the integrity of a neighborhood, and it's a residential neighborhood for residents. It's a fundamental change to have neighbors living in a neighborhood versus people who are tourists that are there for a day or two. The CCNRs for our subdivision, which I believe have not expired, state that homes in the Valley View tract will be used for residential purposes only, and that any commercial business use is prohibited. In my view, this is a tourist lodging business being operated in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The TOT tax itself implies a commercial transaction. I feel for those who want short-term rental permits, they should be, I feel like the 30-day minimum rule is a compromise for people that want to rent out but maybe don't want a long-term rental. But, or I feel like those homes should be located in areas that are zoned both commercial and residential. But I do not think they should be blop down in the middle of an established neighborhood and threaten the neighbor who lives there. It's a benefit to the owners of the property, it's a benefit to the city, it's not to the 40 residents in the Valley View subdivision tract. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Actually, if you could actually speak into it so people at home can listen to it, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's a little intimidating.
And if you could state your name as well, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patty Bagnato. I live at 1610 Cabernet Lane. I have not spoken before the Planning Commission before tonight. I am here tonight to ask you to approve Paula and Paula's results, application for a short-term rental permit, thereby giving visitors to St. Helena the opportunity to enjoy a proven five-star accommodation outside of the hotel environment. My experience with Paula is a result of a planned vacation to London next year. We feel very fortunate to have been given the referral to rent her London flat. It is in a neighborhood. That's what we wanted, the neighborhood experience. We wanted to live like a local in a foreign country. My dealings with Paula throughout the rental process has been informative and professional. The contacts, excuse me, the contract that we signed was very complete and detailed, including a clause addressing Paula's concern to protect the neighborhood from any type of disturbance. With the 12 years of experience and commitment to exceed all of her guests' expectations, Paula's London flat now numbers, number 10 out of 560 rental units in the Westminster Rental Properties. That position of excellence is earned. That position is earned with an equal commitment to both the responsibility to guest and to neighbor. That's why we're renting the London property. I feel that people visiting St. Helena deserve to have the opportunity to live like a local. We do not want to come to a, I don't want to come to London and feel that I am somehow inferior, or I am somehow a threat to the neighborhood, because I want to experience the neighborhood feeling. I don't want to walk into a massive hotel to call myself home in London. Paula has given me and many others that opportunity. I believe that you should pass this so that we can offer St. Helena visitors a five-star accommodation, a five-star experience in, while being local in St. Helena. I work at Pennyweight. I visit with visitors from all over the world and all over the United States every day. As such, I feel I am an ambassador of our city so that they leave our city saying, "The people of St. Helena are welcoming. They are not judgmental. They are not threatened by us. They are proud of their valley, and they're willing to share it with us." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Howdy. My name's Jim Sweeney, 1407 Kearney. I have to say, I am Tracy's lesser half. Anyway, I kind of didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I was inspired by the passion of St. Helena Strong. You know, as Tracy had mentioned, we have one of the permits. And we're St. Helena Strong. We've lived here 15 years, we've raised our kids here, we've been involved in scouts, and charities, and church, less frequently than Father Cleo would like. But we're very much St. Helena Strong, and we have one of these permits. And we have the permit for a couple of reasons. Our kids are gone, our home is expensive, and we can be an advocate for the community. The second thing is, is that this process to separate the family from the permit, this is kind of what democracy is about, and you advance this to know that this would be a sensitive issue. I respect that. But in separating those, and apparently there's going to be a great deal of momentum in the meeting in September, but to separate these issues and say, "The process requires neighborhood approval." So that first and foremost was in the plan, so there's a process to this. The second one is, is that as I've looked into it, and it's been reported here in the commission, there have been little to no complaints through this process, and each one drives review. When you think about little to no complaints, there are 25 permits in this city, most are at least two bedrooms, and often what'll happen is it's up to 20% to 25% occupancy with couples. That number alone is 10,000 people spending room nights in St. Helena. Last week, inspired by the meeting in September, I went to the top, what I consider, I don't mean it in an arrogant way, the top restaurants, Farmstead, Terra, Goose and Gander, Cook, Market, Archetypes, Cindy's, and Trevina. Every one of them has said that they recognize that these permits are bringing money to the community, and St. Helena is strong from every cover of the paper we're reading. The only way we're going to be strong is generating revenue and generate it responsibly. So the average day in Napa Valley is bakery, wineries, dinner. That's it. Aren't we lucky? So the key is if we have 10,000 guests going to model, going to wineries, and going to dinner without generating complaints within the community, and we're all legally, whether you catch up or whether we pay it on a monthly basis, paying our taxes, it's good for the community as well. So once again, I want to, we can separate these, democracy says we should be going through this process, and it sounds like you don't have the 30% that should prohibit your permit. The other side is to separate, the reason that the city has these is we have no hotel rooms, and if we're not careful, St. Helena someday is going to become a stop sign. And so with that said, I'm St. Helena Strong, I'm a permit holder, and I support you.
Good evening. I'm Lana. I've been off, my address is 1533 Pine Street. I want to go on record as saying that the short-term rental ordinance adopted by the city of St. Helena in April of 2012 is much in need of revision. This ordinance came with a list of rules, regulations, and restrictions, few of which have been closely monitored by the city, and few are still that hold any legal clout for violators or for neighbors who are being continually intruded upon. When this ordinance was put into effect, the city was well aware of the fact that there were many vacation rental properties in St. Helena city limits. At that time, an inventory of those properties should have been made by the city, but it wasn't. And a discussion as to what the effect would be placing commercial enterprises in the middle of neighborhoods, that should have been looked at. Instead, the city saw the potential for added income and approved the ordinance allowing 25 homes to be legal short-term rentals, and required a 12% TOT tax, which they're collecting. Upon passage of that ordinance, the city council suggested that that ordinance be reviewed in a year. It's been three years. If one goes on VRBO website today, you'll see 99 vacation rentals offered in the city of St. Helena. Are these all short-term rentals? Nobody knows. Are they legally operating and paying a TOT tax? I don't think anybody knows that either. Are these 99 vacation rentals tapping into valuable resources that St. Helena is desperate need of, like water and roads and police service? And most importantly, are our neighborhoods being changed by the intrusion of these mini motels? Ask anyone in town, and you'll be told horror stories of neighbors being disturbed by visitors inhabiting these vacation homes. Problems of after-hours noise, cars parked illegally, partying at all wee hours of the night, all in total disregard of the neighbors living nearby. Until recently, the city has claimed that there weren't any problems. I just heard that a minute ago. City Hall hasn't received any complaints. And that's probably because at 2:00 in the morning, you call the police department, you don't call City Hall. And when you call City, when you call the police department, they hadn't been communicating that with the city. I've heard that from council members, I've heard that from staff. There is so much input needed and so many questions to be answered before the city considers adding one more home to this list. We need to look at this, it's not being enforced, it was never properly investigated to begin with. If we continue to have this ordinance, which allows 25 short-term rentals, and we very may, will do that, it seems to be that it needs to be closely watched and closely enforced. Do we have the staff to do that? There have to be penalties for those not conforming to the rules and regulations, and for those violating the rights of neighbors and neighborhoods. The city needs to get a handle on identifying the short-term rentals that are operating illegally in this town, and hold them accountable with fines and possible legal action. People with complaints need to have the opportunity to voice their concerns and complaints in an open forum to the chamber, to the city council and to the Planning Commission. So all of the elected officials can see how these short-term rentals are affecting our neighborhoods, and so your staff can make informed recommendations on this issue. I understand that there is going to be a town meeting, and it's scheduled for September 23rd, and I would certainly hope that the city puts that on their website and it gets in all the papers. I'm tonight asking that the city council consider placing this application and any other applications on hold prior to that upcoming town council meeting and subsequent review by the city council, which I hear they're going to be doing by the end of this year. Postpone your decision until we've reviewed and fully vetted this whole process. It seems unfair to expect all these neighbors who have come here tonight to voice their concerns to be put on a two-year contract, because these are good for two years, with an absentee applicant who has already shown disregard for city law. The demographics of our town are changing rapidly, and I encourage all people concerned with the impacts of vacation rentals in St. Helena to come to that town hall meeting. It's September 23rd, 5 to 7 here. Hope to see everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Qualia. I live at 1933 Spring Street. I am a adjacent property owner to the Rosdahl property. My fam, I am a third-generation farmer on that property since 1929. Matter of fact, my grandfather owned the property where the Rosdahl residence sits. What I've heard here from them is false. I've been an adjacent property owner, I've had conversations with them, my wife has had conversations with them on two occasions when they wanted to access the backyard to redo their, access the vineyard to be closer to work on their backyard. At no time did she mention anything about a long, about a short-term rental being proposed there or even thinking about doing it. I'm questioning as to where my letter went. I know there was one other letter that came to the Planning Commission. Apparently, mine didn't make it into the file. But I did email that to Noah, as well as Miss Monet, I believe. I had email conversations with her, so I don't know where my email went on that. I adamantly oppose this rental. Privacy screens, I don't know if the Planning Commission has actually visited the backyard. There is no fence or privacy screen in the backyard. I can look directly into their backyard, as do their tenants when they come over to stay. I have new neighbors moving in every weekend. So I've had my picture taken in the last six months, I don't know how many times, I am not that photogenic. There is a million-dollar view from her backyard looking into my property. It's five acres of vineyard with a beautiful house and old barn. I'm sure the people that come there enjoy it. I've picked up wine bottles out in my vineyard, I've asked people to get out of my vineyard. There is no fence. I have no privacy in my backyard whatsoever. Years ago, I asked my dad, if we didn't make any money on the grapes that we farm there, because we really don't, why he did it. He said it was for his privacy. I don't mind my neighbors being in their backyard, they're my neighbors. I have new tenants moving, and I may as well be living in the backyard of a hotel. So Miss Rosdahl's representation, I never got a letter from Miss Rosdahl. She only talked to me about accessing the backyard. So as far as the property managers, I know Mr. Frey did do the work in the backyard, nice man. I've never once talked to his wife, and I am an adjacent property owner to that, to that residence. So the fact that she started a rental without a permit, and the fact that she basically indicated, didn't even include me in the letter notification process, and didn't even bother to tell me that it was going to be a rental, anything from now on that she says is very suspect. I think the Planning Commission really, really needs to look at that everybody that is in support of Miss Rosdahl does not live next to the residents. There's, everyone in opposition that I've heard speak today is actually a community member that lives in that neighborhood. I've seen that neighborhood grow over years. I left here 20 years ago and was fortunate enough to move back. I left a farming community and I've come back to Disneyland. So this is what we see going on in our community. I'm very concerned about it. I'm more concerned about my privacy, the privacy for my family. This is the type of stuff that really makes people like us think about selling our property and getting out of the valley. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Belt. I live on Hillview Place in St. Helena. I've lived here for almost 40 years. I'm not going to try and reiterate what everyone has said tonight in opposed to this, this short-term rental. I would just like to echo what they've said. I'm going to basically be at that September 23rd meeting and express my views in more depth, but I do want to bring one point to your attention, and that is that the city of St. Helena does not have the code enforcement to even begin to try and enforce the municipal codes that we have. I heard this evening, before this topic was mentioned, that we have inadequate noise ordinance. Do you know, if a neighbor complains about a neighbor in this community, that the police department will not issue a citation? That the resident who makes the com- That the se, that the resident who makes the complaint has to issue a citation under a citizen's arrest? The police department does not have the ability to issue citations for this. It is, uh, th- this has happened in my neighborhood where we had five or six neighbors go to the mayor and to the chief of police to make a complaint about a neighbor who was making a lot of noise, and I have it in writing from the police chief, basically that this is not something that they can do. The, the police are not considered to be the public. And currently, there is an ordinance that allows the police department to give a warning, but it should be done in writing, and then with an enforcement after that. So, basically, I just want to reiterate what has been said, I'm opposed to it, and I'll be at the 23rd meeting myself. This is, this is not a place where you want to have commercial establishments in our neighborhoods. It's not good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first, I have Mike Qualia's letter right here, if you need to have it for the record. My name is Pat Ansley, I live at 1990 Olive, I back on to, um, Mike Qualia's vineyard. But what I want to mention is much more specific. These homeowners have shown non-compliance with the current water rules. They water their front yard, their garden, every morning, and so much so that it runs off into the gutter, and I have photos to prove this. And I, I'm just surprised that nobody in city government even has driven by and seen this, but anyway, we see this every morning, I go walking with a friend in the mornings. They have also shown a lack of respect for private property of others. They removed the fence that protected the vineyard from their property, the rest of us all have fences. Um, and, and as Mike has said, he's had to ask some people to leave the vineyard, um, because they don't respect the fact that a vineyard is private property, a guest's from out of town thinks it's a park, or whatever. So, I think this is a real serious breach that they don't convey to the guests, they may not go into the vineyard, for no reason you can you go into the vineyard. So, anyway, the rest of us along the perimeter do have fences, and we understand that the vineyard is private property, we value the vineyard. I think the owners have not demonstrated good neighbor ethics, nor have they followed existing city rules on private home use, nor, um, water use. And, who, to whom shall I give this?
If you could give it to Noah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item?
Uh, my name is Jane Scales, I live at 1120 Valley View, and I live right next door to 1134 Valley View. I did also write a letter, uh, which I have emailed to members of the planning commission and the, uh, planning, planners. I'm opposed to this, uh, to this application for a permit, because, uh, for one thing, she's been operating without a permit for the last year and a half, and I feel that it would be a travesty of justice for a permit to be issued at this point in time. I also feel that our neighborhood is seriously impacted with a lot of people coming in and out all the time, and not to mention the guests that come in and out, but, uh, the support staff, the, um, managers, the yard people, the housekeepers, the, um, pool people, you know, and if, if it were, you know, regular, uh, person who lived there and, and owned the property, or even rented the property long-term, it's perhaps, perhaps there, there would be support staff coming, but certainly not at the, um, at the rate that it does on a short-term rental. She did distribute a letter to the surrounding neighbors, but that was only after, I'm sure that she received a letter from the city saying that she needed to cease and desist, um, the, uh, the activities that she had. So, we were never contacted beforehand, and we were never told that she was going to be doing any kind of short-term rental. Um, it's a, it is a neighborhood, and I have lived there for 30 years, and I do not support a, um, a short-term rental in, in our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
I'm Anne Sorensen, and I live at 1150 Valley View, which is on the north side of, of the property. We were not informed that she was going to be doing a short-term rental. The first I heard about it, I was talking to Donnie one day, and he said that, and I was, I was shocked. Uh, one of the things that I've really been down on lately, uh, and it's not just you, is people who go by the philosophy of it's easier to ask forgiveness than to ask permission. That's just really great, I just, it's just one of my things. Um, there is an increase in traffic. Uh, we don't see too much of it because we have quite a ha, a bunch of bushes between our house and theirs. And there's a little more noise that comes from the backyard, a little bit later than what, we're a very quiet neighborhood. And, um, it's a little bit later than what we would normally be out there. You know, my husband goes to bed at 8:30. What can I say, he gets up early. So, um, Donnie and Suzanne do a wonderful job. Donnie's done several things for me as a friend. Uh, I am involved in Boy Scouts with him. Um, but we were not notified that this was going to be a short-term rental. The first time I knew it was being rented, I talked to a gentleman, and he says, "Oh, we're just here for a while," and I didn't know that that meant for the weekend. Uh, it's, it's imposition on us to have a short-term rental, we are a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to invite the applicant to come back up?
I didn't know that it was necessary for a person renting a house, even a short-term rental, to inform renters or neighbors of their intention, so that's a new one of me. Even if you have a permit, I wasn't aware that you have to, um, talk to every person and say, "This is what I'm doing with my property." Also, I'd like to address Mr. Quigley's, um, comment about not receiving a letter. I believe the reason he didn't get a letter was because he wasn't within the 300 feet, um, distribution. Erin?
I, I definitely recognize the name from the distribution list, so I'm not sure.
It's his father who has property on, on the street, but Mike lives, uh, over, um, on Hudson, more towards Hudson. And he, he, he said that I-
Plea- please, no comments from, thank you.
He said that I didn't talk to him, I have emails here saying, he come, he sent the letter that he gave you, and I said, "Hi, Mike, um, I'm back from my appointment on Thursday, Paula and I would like to give you a telephone or Skype call this week. Can you let me know a convenient date and time that works for you with the number or Skype number that we can reach you at? Please note there's a, uh, nine-hour time difference, we look forward to talking to you and addressing your concerns." His reply was, "Thanks, Paula, if you could call me around 6:45 AM California time on Friday, that would work. I'll be on my way to work and we'll have time to discuss." So, we did, and, um, I have pictures here, the comment that there's no fences in, I, I recognized Mike's concern about the fence, and I said, "We will work out something," and, um, I said, "I can understand your concern if people are going in the vineyard," but also I noted that he has access to his vineyard on Spring Street, so if people are coming in, I don't know if they're people from town or somewhere else. But I did say to him, "Yes, we will address the, the fence concern." And, um, let's see. The, um, irrigation, oh, the noise and the traffic. Since the property is, is rented mostly on the weekends, um, there's really not a lot of school traffic or business traffic. And, um, the increased noise, yes, I can, I can understand that, and in fact, in my letter of response to people, I said, "Since I've been doing this in London, I have experience with rental contracts," as, uh, Ms. Bagatti had said, and I had suggested to renters that if we continue, that there would be a clause in the rental agreement that would be a noise penalty. So, how that would work is when renters sign an agreement, they agree that they will be fined $150 if they create noise. The person, the neighbor complaining would contact Suzanne, who would immediately contact the guest and say, "Cease," and they would say, "You're losing this money." And I said, "For that neighbor's inconvenience, I will donate that money to a local charity of their choice." So, I don't benefit from that money, and I am like, thinking creatively to try to address the concerns of neighbors, and that was one of the ways I did with the noise. Um, as far as changing the character of the neighborhood, it is changing. Most people who live there, yes, they're a full-time residents, but they're also part-time people. And, um, I'm not responsible for prices going up, nor, you know, what's happening on the street. A month ago, a house on Valley View sold for a million dollars. So, I have the listing and the closing papers, and also I have pictures here, again, because I didn't know that there was a television screen. It shows that other neighbors do not have fences looking out of Mike's vineyards, so there are a few people who do not have fences. And, um, it shows, I'll pass these around, it shows what we've done with the privacy between the, the screens and everything, again, sorry, but, that's that. And, um, and to address the, um, the tax issue. I pay taxes all the time, if I have a rental property in London, I pay tax on that, I pay tax on here. This is not a scheme to defraud the city of St. Helena by not paying taxes. So, that's why immediately when we were notified-
Please, thank you.
We, we paid, and that's what we did. So, that's the comments. And also, I'd just like to go on record, um, since we live out of town, and I've lived here, as I said, on and off since the 1980s, when I first started to work for Lewis Martini Winery. And, um, so, we're not people just coming from out of town and buying. Unfortunately, we bought at a time when the market was down, so we could afford to do it. But I'd just like to go on record for my neighbors, so they know, if we don't get a permit now or in the future, since we do not live in the Bay Area, we will be complying with 30-day rental. So, that means if we're here three months, there could be the house rented, you know, once, how many more times? Six times a year? Plus, we will do house exchanges, which to my knowledge, um, there's nothing in ordinances regarding exchanging houses with other people throughout the country or throughout the world. If there is, I, I'm welcome to hear about that. So, I just wanted to make the neighbors aware that we will not be in violation. If they see people coming in and out, it's either going to be the 30-day renters, or it's going to be house exchange, or it's going to be friends and family in the Bay Area. And, um, regarding the noise level, um, of the house, when we came, the house was occupied by a couple, and also they rented out one of the rooms, they, I believe, lived there for five years or so, so they had renters in that room on and off, so there were a minimum of three cars in the driveway. Also, for part of the time, a psychotherapy business was run out of the house. The house was in need of repair, there were dogs barking in the yard, one of my neighbors told me this, a bunch of cats spraying in gardens, when I renovated, I had to deal with all this cat urine smell. So, I think, even with the, the guests that we do have, it's a lot less than what was there with the commotion going on at this house and people going in and out. So, um, that's what I like to say.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Pat, um, Pat, unfortunately, uh, that was the rebuttal, so I do need to close the public comment, I'm so sorry.
I drove all the way over here.
I'm, I'll leave it to a vote to the commissioners if, uh, they want me to open it back up, but you were the only one, I'm not going to open it up for anyone else. Am I, am I at liberty to do that?
The public hearing was closed, I don't have the commission policies and procedures in front of me.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay, but you're off-base, guys.
All right, perfect, it's, we're off-base. All right, so, I'm going to invite Commissioner Discussion, and Mary, did you want to see these photos? I, I, so.
Could I just ask for some clarification from the staff? Um, I've been trying to mark on this map the people who have come up and voiced opposition. Who is in the immediate neighborhood? Obviously, the vineyard behind, and appears both sides, uh, of the property, uh, people spoke in opposition.
Yeah, uh, it's, staff isn't aware of the, the locations of the people who spoke before they spoke, so.
It appears to be a mix of neighboring residents and general community members-
Right.
-but the majority were in the immediate vicinity, it appeared from my notes.
I have a few questions for staff, just to kind of get the discussion going. Um, do you have a copy of the CCNR for this neighborhood?
No.
Okay. Do you have an accounting of the TOT and fines? Because my understanding is that it's a thousand dollars for each day.
I, uh, we do have them, they're, they weren't including the staff report, they're quite lengthy.
Okay.
But we do have them.
All right, um, 'cause if they've been renting it since December of 2014, and it's now August of 2015, and it's a thousand dollars for each day, that, for, of a fine, was that not-
They were not charged a thousand dollar per day fee, it, it was the past TOT interests associated with that and some penalty, but it was not the thousand dollar per day penalty.
So, it wasn't that part of the, of the code? Okay.
Um, wh- how was that, uh, how did you come to that, um, agreement?
That, that finance, the finance department handled calculating everything.
Okay.
It's based on the ordinance requirements.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to clarify that the 33% of neighborhood protest is the process to get the application to come before the planning commission. It does not mean that if you get 33% against it, that that automatically, um, negates the, you know, that, that denies the application. That's just to get it before the planning commission, otherwise, the, the planning department approves it or disapproves it. So, I just wanted to clarify, I think someone, I, I mean, that was a, that was a misunderstanding that a lot of us had for a while, so, um, and that's something that if you go to that meeting, if you don't like that, you can go to the meeting and, and talk about changing that. But I was gonna, um, you know, I was, I was, I was present when the ordinance was made, and, and the idea behind it was, um, at first, was to, you know, permanent residents who went on vacation for a couple of weeks of the year wanted to be able to rent their place out, and that's how it started. And it kind of evolved from that to, um, be more of a revenue generating, um, procedure. And, um, but the, the whole time, there was this sense that it was, it was putting a business in a residential zone, and that there would need to be a lot of, um, you know, a lot of accountability during the first few years to see how it worked, because the idea was if the quality of life in the neighborhood was eroded by these businesses, that, um, the ordinance would be, you know, be looked at, and the, um, the people that were eroding the, the quality of life would not have their, um, permits anymore. So, um, a few months ago, though, as was mentioned by one of the speakers here, the process of getting complaints from the police department to the city planning department was not really, um, well-developed, and so that, there had apparently been a lot of more complaints that were thought that simply weren't, that no one knew about, so that when the first year's, um, review came up, which it did, I recall a one year, a review of this ordinance, um, the question was asked, "Were there any complaints?" And I think there had been one. And so, it wasn't until a few months ago that it became apparent that that might not be an accurate number of complaints. My feeling as a, as a commissioner is that, um, in the spirit of the, or, the ordinance and the general plan, the 1993 general plan and the updated gen, general plan, the quality, the neighborhood quality of, of, um, is, is very much valued, and to my mind, if you're going to be putting a business in a neighborhood, and the neighbors have a chance to say they don't want the business, that the neighbors prevail in that, in that circumstance. Whether or not the business, I'm not finding any fault with the business, it's just the process, I think it's important to maintain the qual, the, the small-town, um, ambiance of this town, uh, it's, it's, that's supported in the general plan, it's been supported very much, and, and- And, and when you do these rentals in a city, it's a much different, it's a much different situation because people in cities don't always know their neighbors anyway. In a small town, it's different, and these neighborhoods, you know, people, if people are starting to complain, which they are, I think, to my mind, I defer to the neighborhood com- uh, concerns rather than the business, uh, application, since this is about putting businesses in a zone where they're not otherwise acceptable. So, I, I would, I can't support, um, this, this particular application just based on, uh, the neighborhood, uh, pushback. I'm not judging any, any of the other things.
Thank you, Bobby. Oh, no, this is the discussion time.
Uh, I happen to sit on this commission when this ordinance came before us. It was brought before us by Commissioner Galberth at that point. He's now our mayor. And, uh, I, I would like to disagree with whoever said that, um, there was no inventory done because he did a huge, huge, huge thing. And he had pictures of all the places, and, and whether, whether you agree with that or not, he did the inventory. And I will also say that he was the only one on the commission that voted against this ordinance. So, I, I just want to straighten that out with you folks. There was something else that was in the ordinance, or should have been in the ordinance, that never got there, was, and it, it bothers me with this one, uh, was that you could not buy a house and turn it into a rental. That the housing stock was then taking away from, or that, that house was then ta- being taken away from our housing stock. That never got into the ordinance, and I think in, uh, in the September meeting that we need to address that because I think that that's very important. Uh, and I'm not, I'm not accusing the applicant of, of doing that, but being that she's got, uh, VBOs elsewhere. I'm not sure that wasn't done, and I think that needs to be looked into. As far as, um, what's going on now, my personal opinion is that, um, the ordinance is written as it's written, and I think we probably have to go along with what, uh, the applicant's requested. I don't like the fact that we had a VBO for, um, two years illegally. But then we're not enforcing anything, or we haven't been, and I hope, I think, I, my understanding is that we're now doing something about that or making an attempt to do that, and I think that's very important. But I, I really have, I want to listen to what everyone else has to say, but it, it's, this is a difficult decision for me.
I, I agree that this is a difficult, um, case, and I, uh, also think that the private covenant should be looked at. I kind of suspect maybe it's, it's old and came about before vacation rentals, uh, even-
Were an issue.
Were an issue, and maybe it doesn't address short-term rentals, but I, I think it should be looked at because the ordinance is quite clear that it doesn't, uh, you know, abrogate any of those private agreements. I appreciate, you know, the general displeasure with the ordinance, but as we sit here, we need to take it as it is. It may be changed. Um, I don't, I don't know. As far as the neighborhood opposition, uh, I agree with Bobby there. I, I find it rather significant that the neighbors on both sides and, uh, behind, uh, the property have an issue with it. And I, I wonder really how many of us wouldn't have an issue with a short-term rental right next door to us. I don't know that we've hit the 30% threshold, but there is some serious opposition. I'm persuaded that this owner, uh, has a good management team and pro- properly runs her rental. But I'm rather astonished that if she's been doing this in other places, it wasn't a first priority to come here and comply, uh, with the law as it's written and get a permit in the first place. So, for that reason, I can't support this.
Um, can I say something more before you go?
Yeah, of course.
Um, I, first of all, I wanted to, uh, commend the applicant on your, um, on your noise and disturbance of neighbors paragraph. And I really hope that that gets put into the ordinance. I think that's brilliant, the, what you have. But I also wanted to say that I, the other reason I ca- and the reason I can't support this in terms of, um, the, the gallery, I cannot find, I, I cannot, uh, support, there are no findings, number two, number three, number 10, 11, and 12. I cannot make those findings, and also number seven. So, I wanted to, to have that part of my, um, of my objection in, on the record too. I'm sorry, I forgot to say that before.
That's fine, Bobby. Grace, did you want to add anything before I go?
No.
Okay. I'm definitely agree with Mary. I did bring up the CCNR as well, and if there's a copy. And I, I really think that that need, that we needed to have a copy of that, but I have a, it's, I have a sneeze suspicion that this isn't going to get approved anyway, so that is somewhat moot at this point. I also appreciate the ordinance is as it is right now. It is going to have, as Mary said, it's, it might not be changed, but it is going to have a significant review. There are a lot of issues that have come up since it was reviewed, because it was at a, at the year point. It's just we didn't have the right complaint process, and the complaint process is going to be one of the things that is also reviewed to make sure that there is an honest and accurate look at what is going on. I, I just, I just, it's with the neighbors, and it has to fit within the neighborhood. And I just, I, unfortunately, I just, I can't support it. And if we can have a motion. I guess you could do the last pa- the last paragraph right before attachments, and just say that you moved to deny.
I move to deny this application.
Keep going. Have, keep reading. Yeah.
For, um, after considering the effects the proposed use would have on surrounding uses, is that? And the cumulative impacts within the community in approving a short-term rental application.
Nope.
Oh, excuse me.
That's good.
So, that's, okay.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Kizner?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone, for coming. Moving on to our department report, this is an opportunity for staff to report on or update the commission on any relevant matters. This is not a time for commission discussion. This is just a report from staff.
Uh, just to let you know that the, uh, the EIR consultants are, uh, continue to work on the Hunter EIR update. Uh, they're finalizing the traffic numbers, and, um, that project is anticipated to be brought before the, uh, commission, consistent with the schedule that was discussed with the, with the city council. It may slip a little bit. The consultants are having a little bit of time, um, organizing, but it is on track to be brought before you. I do not believe it'll happen in September. Agenda review meeting, uh, we weren't able to have our agenda review meeting this week. We had a little bit of, uh, of miscommunication, uh, by my part, but that is, um, intended to be, uh, ongoing, uh, agenda process, and it will help us determine future agendas, and we'll, we'll discuss that with the chair and the vice chair.
I'm sorry, if you, could you have all discussions in the hallway, please?
And then just a reminder that we will be holding a short-term rental, uh, or short, a town hall meeting on short-term rentals here in this venue, September 23rd from 5:00 to 7:00, and that will be intended ju- just to take, uh, input. It's purely informational. No decisions will be made. And, uh, notice will be sent out in, in the newspaper, uh, through the e-news and all other typical community engagement mechanisms.
And I'm sorry, we do not get Commissioner Sweeney back. We are going to have the Hunter project is pushed back a little bit. We're not going to get it in September.
The intention is, is that, uh, all appointed and elected officials will be invited, but the goal is that they will not be participating, so that way, any statements made wouldn't preclude them from voting, uh, on the future ordinance.
She asked for that our town come and give us just an update.
Oh, yes.
That we, that we bring our, our town, uh, to, to do their presentation.
Okay.
Perfect. All right.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much.